Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks again for keeping your schedule flexible and attending as we call the meeting of one more special meeting of the Cedric County Board of Commissions. Today's Thursday, November 12th at 1:30 PM. And again, these meetings are viewable on Facebook Live and YouTube. Thank you as we battle through our CARES funding and the COVID world. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
New business, Item A, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act.
Okay. Manager Tom Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman, or good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. We have two speakers under the CARES component today. Lindsey will start us up with a request for a bipolar ionization project that will require a vote to approve or deny from the Commission. A second will be for some positions under CARES. Again, another vote will be required, so that's two votes. And then the third will be a series of spending updates, which will be a receive and file. Hope will then take the podium. Brent is out today and will present recommendations from the review team, which we would ask you to vote on as well. And then Lindsey will get back up and we will have a little bit of a discussion about testing and our ongoing situation with Wichita State. And we can get you freshest information on some strides we've made in that area. So Lindsey?
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tom, for outlining how this is gonna... I just appreciate it. I know for me, and I think the Commission, that we outlined what's gonna be a presentation, receive and file versus a vote and all that. So that being said, Lindsey, welcome to the meeting. Good to see you.
Good to see you too, Chairman. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Lindsey Pogusso, your CFO. So the first two items we'll talk today will each require a vote from you to approve or disapprove. So the first item that we have to discuss is something I just sent you this morning. And again, I apologize, I hate getting you these things last minute. But unfortunately, as we are getting closer and closer, now down to 47 days until roughly the end of CARES, we are... we're just gonna move things through as quickly as we can. So this ask is pretty similar, actually, to what we talked about last week. And that is the installation, excuse me, of bipolar ionization air cleaning units throughout county facilities. So in the, I don't know, a month or two ago, you all approved an HVAC assessment for our county facilities department to evaluate what needs our county facilities might have related to COVID-19. The results of that came back, and this is the recommendation, is a bipolar ionization unit. And so essentially, this would go into 22 of our facilities for... through a contracted rate. The rest would be done through in-house work by our facilities team. And it would be a total cost of $823,960. And so in the email I had sent you this morning, there is a table that shows what type of cleaners would be installed on furnaces, on rooftop units, air handling units, and fan coils. And so, and again, it would be in 22 building units. And so it would focus primarily on those where we have the most traffic, either employees or public. And again, as we talked about last week, the concept here is that this science basically makes it so that the ions, the virons, the microbes, all of those things cluster together and then can be cotton filters. Or there's a way that it basically breaks down the outside membrane of these items and makes it so that it can't... the bad stuff can't get through. As I said, I've learned a lot, and I'm not sure I can speak with any intelligence, but that is my basic understanding of what this happens. But thankfully, Andrew Dilts is on the phone if we need him to explain any of that science. So with that, I would recommend that you approve this project. We are under some pretty strict time constraints to get this done by the 12:30 deadline.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a very short question. I did look at the list, but I don't know which buildings we own and which ones we rent. Are all of these ones that we own, or are some of these that we rent?
Almost all are ones that we own. My understanding, there is a few that we lease, and we would work that out with the landlord. But I think the concept was just to try and get it in where we have county business happening. It's over and beyond what we normally would do with that facility for, like, a utility bill or something like that.
Okay. Are any of the ones that we rent, short-term left on them? I don't know if we want to put a big investment in something that we don't own. That was my main question behind it.
The only one that I know for certain, scrolling through this, that has a lease on it actually is the Treasurer Kellogg Tag Office. And we know that that is not a short-term lease.
Right.
Other than that, all of the rest of these EMS, admin, adult residential, extension, CDDO, Mungar, corrections, forensic science, public works, et cetera, are buildings we own. So actually, I should revise that statement. One is a leased facility that I'm aware of.
Very good. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. There was only one bid.
So the HVAC assessment that was done basically went out to one vendor. And so that vendor has made these recommendations. And so that vendor is the one who's getting this business. What we understand, though, is that it's likely that they'll have to subcontract out based on the volume of work, and so it's likely to involve multiple contractors. That was a concern. We had tried to envision a process where we could go out to bid and try and get multiple local vendors. But unfortunately, the timing on this just doesn't work out.
Okay. I mean, this is three... a little over 3/4 of a million dollars, so...
It's significant.
Okay. I mean, I haven't had a lot of time to look this over, so... but I understand the urgency. That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, for your comments and questions. Being known... now further right now, I will make a motion to approve the bipolar units' request for $823,960. There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, Lindsey.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. So the next ask is something that has come up essentially overnight, although I know it's been an issue that's been on the radar for a while. And that is the Health Department, because of the spike in the number of cases, the contact tracing and the contact that is necessary, they are in need of additional investigators and call staff. And so they are requesting 52 additional staff through year-end. That would include a disease investigation team coordinator, 24 more disease investigators, three more senior disease investigators, 20 more medical triage line specialists, and four more medical triage line team leaders. And the Health Department's communications said they had 30 staff in office today calling cases and scheduling appointments, and they are nowhere on top of everything with 800 additional cases since Monday. And so that was the correspondence last night. And so we are working to get a cost estimate on that. Certainly, we have ample funding available between the testing bucket and the staffing bucket to cover these costs when we had a request for 55 additional for six months earlier this year. That was an estimated cost of $3.5 million. And so we certainly have that, even if it was to assume that exact same number for six months, we would still have that amount of funding available in the personnel bucket. So we will work to get you that additional information. But in the interest of trying to accommodate health's needs and get those staff brought on board and expand the temp staffing agency contract for those frontline workers, we wanted to bring this to you today.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just for staff. Do we have desks, chairs, computers, everything else that they need, phones?
That is a question that we have pending, and I don't know... is Tim on the line?
Tim, are you here?
I am on the line. And Commissioner Dennis, we are working through those acquisitions as well. We know that we've got some deadlines this week. We think that by the time we can get the agencies to provide us with the staff, we will have solved the equipment and space needs as well.
I didn't quite understand. Did she say that we do have the equipment?
Hold on, Tim, let me get you up in the... you're here. Tim? Tim, repeat the last part again about what you have.
We're... we are working through the process to get the equipment that we need and the space that we need. We think that we've got a line on all of it. And we think by the time that we will... we get staff from the staffing agency, we will have solved the logistics issues.
So you're gonna come back at a later date, then, and ask for additional funding for space, equipment, phones, computers?
So...
There may be some potential requests for equipment, but we will take care of the space problem.
And the issues with equipment, and we're working through this now, what we're being told by Dell is that we are to the point where they can't guarantee delivery within our CARES timeframe. And so the CARES guidance says that we have to have, at the time we enter our procurement, we have to have the expectation or the agreement that the equipment will arrive by 12:30 to be used by 12:30. And so that will be a challenge that we'll need to work through on the equipment side. Now, the alternative would be that we would use county general fund dollars if we had to make the orders, and then if they were received in time, reimburse with CARES funding at that time.
Okay. But your request, and you've got a couple of other questions, but the request today is for the approval for 52 additional hires?
Yes, so that they can begin that process.
All right. Commissioner Cruz, and then Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Kate, I sent you an email from Sheena. Can you pull that up? This is our staffing table that we get every single week. So while she's pulling that up, I... it's really little on my screen, and I can't figure out how to make it bigger. But it looks like we have 18.5 positions vacant for our Health Department. Do we have Sheena or somebody on the line about how we're gonna fill those vacant positions?
I don't know.
How do we plan to fill vacant positions before we are asking for more positions?
Tim, do you want to address that? I'll try to get Sheena on the line.
We'll continue to do the same thing that we've always done. We've got HR working hard to find folks. We've got multiple staffing agencies that we're working with to try and get staff to do the work. We're gonna continue to do what we've done and try and get them all covered.
Are we having a turnover issue? Are we not getting... I mean, can you help me understand? Do we need to get the word out more? What can we do to help fill these positions that are currently already budgeted but not filled?
One of the issues that we have is that some folks are leaving now because the CARES funding is guaranteed through the end of the year. And folks may be looking for things that are more permanent. We're trying to backfill as quickly as we can, and we're relying on the temp firms because that's the nature of the work that they do, is short-term assignments. And so we're relying on them to help us fill those.
Sheena, are you on the line? She should be calling. Sheena, are you on the...
Hi, this is Sheena.
Yeah. Commissioner Cruz has asked a question about staffing in the Health Department, specifically now with the additional ask of 52 more positions. Commissioner Cruz has brought up that we had a number of vacancies on the numbers that you sent them Tuesday.
This morning.
Or this morning.
Yeah. Yeah, for this week.
Do you want to comment on that, what we're doing to try to recruit, retain, and get these workers in?
Okay. So it's my understanding on those 52 positions, they are going to be the tracer-type positions. And that falls with interim, who is with our... the temporary medical. And what we're running into problems is we cannot get people with those medical backgrounds, like the nurses or OPMs and things like that, for online. But interim has the contracts with them. And it's easier to get them through the temporary service than it is us trying to recruit that. And they have to have that medical backing.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to support new positions. I just wonder if there was something that we could do to help recruit those positions we've already supported that are unfilled. I understand these are two different types of positions, I get that. But the problem is we're having a shortage... I mean, there's a shortage all over the country of healthcare workers in general. We keep hearing that, it's a fact. So I'm just wondering, how can we be more proactive? What can we do as far as a communication standpoint? I mean, maybe our comms team could bring us back a suggestion about what we're going to do to recruit these people.
Well, I don't have... I... part of the conversations that the Health Department is having right now with that. But I do know it's a struggle. We've never had all the positions filled, even with the recruitment efforts that we're trying. I will tell you, one of the other issues, not necessarily even... well, I guess with some of the medical, to be honest with you, is we can't have our employees working with the temp agency. That was one thing that came out of some of the first conversations, is they would not allow that. They thought that we were trying to skirt around some overtime issues, which we're not. So as part of their contract, they wouldn't allow us to do that. And I think if we would have that option, we would have several people in the Health Department who are willing to step up and do some of these jobs. But unfortunately, we're not in a position where we can allow that.
Okay. Thank you, Sheena, for calling in so quickly.
Yeah. And I will say, you know, they are looking at every effort possible, but, you know, I think, like you mentioned, this is going on around the country, and, you know, we're competing with the hospitals for staff as well. And I know some of these medical professionals are just... they're tired and they're burned out.
Yep, I hear that. Akeem?
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Cruz, Akeem Ashford, Communications. Coming from the healthcare field, I think there are a number of things I can work with my staff to be able to do. You know, oftentimes incentives really help for those healthcare workers because they are burned out and they have been working those long hours, as we kind of talked about today. So there are a number of things that we can actually put together and propose, and hopefully can help recruit more folks to the Health Department, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And we'll help it any way possible. I've, you know, I've heard that they're doing active recruitment of nursing students as well, to see if that would be an avenue for us. But we're still trying to explore everything.
Thank you, Sheena. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a couple of questions. So I noticed last week that our focus has shifted from calling 211 to calling a 660 number. So you talked about people to schedule... are you talking about scheduled COVID testing? Is that what we're... is that part of these 52 positions?
Well, I'll defer to Tim. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Someone said, I quote, "Do what we've always done." We are on the verge of having WSU MDL lab do what they promised. And we're talking about a huge number of testing capabilities being turned on any moment now. I mean, it could happen as soon as we can make it happen. They are ready to go. What they've asked for is for people who are interested in facilitating the collection of those samples and getting them to their MDL lab, they can get those results out very quickly. I don't know that I want to... I don't know that I... I don't know that it's the right answer to hire more people to schedule tests through our drive-through lab when we can probably identify people in different organizations, maybe people at Spirit Systems, people at WSU, people within Cedric County organization, people within the school system. It's one hour's worth of training to be certified to become a sample taker, doesn't require a medical background. But that person can be the liaison between the community and the public to receive those samples in their possession with that training and with doing it the correct way, getting to the MDL lab and getting information to the test... to people who provided the samples for... to be tested. And getting that testing done and getting the information back to those people as quickly as possible is our number-one problem. And I don't know that we have to hire these people necessarily to continue doing what we've been doing, scheduling testing through our drive-through lab. We need to transition to the MDL lab. And honestly, we don't need to do this with the Health Department or do it with a medical background. We need people who to take the one hours worth of testing to represent organization or a person in the community that can step up and be that person to get those samples. And the faster we do that, the faster we can hopefully get information back to the people who are spreading this virus and encouraging them to do the things that... maybe, you know, to quarantine and get out of the, you know, out of the places where they're infecting other people. So I don't know that I like the idea of this proposal of simply hiring more people to do what we've been doing. We are on the verge of something extraordinary and big, changing the way we do this entirely. What we need is partners around the community, organizations to step up and have someone from the organization take that training. It's one hour's worth of training, and they can then be trusted to collect those samples and get them to MDL. And I don't know... I'm not sure what the holdup is for getting this turned on, but that's the answer, rather than trying to hire another 52 people through our own organization, I think.
I'm gonna do some answer, and I'm gonna defer to Tim. And we're gonna talk about some testing at length after the CARES item. But some... many of these positions are for tracers. And no matter what happens in the community, who does the testing, how it happens, the tracers are gonna have to go after the positives, contact them, and try to trace backwards and get information so that we can quarantine and do other strategies to keep the virus down. So those positions, I think, no matter what happens with Wichita State, need to be... we need to try to fill those. On the testing side of it, and maybe we'll defer that to a little bit later, but what we're trying to work out with WSU right now is how we can do the testing that they offer at our drive-through site. And there's a little bit of technical issue with that, which Tim will talk about more at length later. But even if schools and businesses begin to test more, which they will through the WSU option, we're still gonna have to track tracers, we're still gonna have to process the positives on the backside that we, the Health Department, will have to do that. So, Tim, do you want to add anything more than what I just said?
No. I think the issue right now, the reason that we need additional staff, is because of the positivity rate in the test results that we're getting. Everybody that tests positive, doesn't matter where they go to get their sample taken, which lab processes the test. If they're a Cedric County resident, it comes back to the Health Department, and then we've gotta be in contact with them and let them know about their positive test and talk through all of the dynamics that are involved there. So increased testing is gonna help slow things down, but we've gotta have the staff that will be able to make those contacts with folks.
Let me follow up with a comment, if that's okay. So we have a lot of people involved in scheduling and performing tests through the drive-through lab. I would like to see that drive-through lab converted to saliva testing. And I know that they say it takes longer, but when we have partners throughout the community, this is not... it doesn't require a medical background to collect that sample. It simply has to have someone who's been through the one-hour class and has that certification. So it's not... I guess what I'm saying is the testing... the sample... the sample-taking should morph from away from the drive-through facility and should be something we can do with literally dozens of partners around this community. We have a lot of staff available at the drive-through right now that maybe, I don't know if they are able to change what they're doing, but I'm not... I don't disagree that the tracing is important. I actually had COVID, as you all know. I did have a contact tracer contact me a couple of times, they did a follow-up. If I would add up the entire amount of time I spent on the phone with that person, it was probably less than 10 minutes. And I appreciate that it did take 10 minutes. But the number-one thing we've gotta do is get people who are positive to know that they're positive. They know when they're positive, they gotta... they've gotta leave society and quarantine. That's the most important thing. And hopefully, they know that. And then trying to trace it to other people, that's important, but it is a secondary priority to getting that person to know that they're positive and getting out of society. That's the number-one thing we have to focus on. And I'm just saying, there's a lot of folks involved right now in scheduling and administering these tests through the drive-through, which I would hope that within a few weeks from now is now a thing of the past. We've gotta move on to saliva testing through MDL at WSU. That's... that is the solution. And if we can focus on that as a priority, that's number one. And just for clarity, Lindsey, you said 52, and you broke it down. Can you please break it down? Break down, what are those positions again? How many?
Yes. So there is a new county position type called a disease investigation team coordinator. So there'll be one of those. 24 more disease investigators, three more senior disease investigators, 20 more medical triage line specialists, and four more medical triage line team leaders.
Maybe I missed it. Earlier, when you mentioned those things, I thought you talked about they would be doing scheduling. One of those groups is doing scheduling.
So under the medical triage line specialist, those positions will schedule COVID testing appointments, call clients with test results, and perform outreach. And then the four medical triage line team leaders will schedule COVID testing appointments and lead medical triage line teams.
Okay. So I guess my summary is, I'll support the request, that's not a problem. But I just don't know... I guess I would say, everything we can do to find partners in this community and get those tests moving as quickly as possible has got to be our priority. And I agree with Commissioner Cruz. I don't know that we're gonna fill these positions before the end of the year. It sounds like it's gonna be really hard to find people who have the qualifications to actually... to fill these 52 positions, but I'll be glad to support the request.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lindsey, I got an accounting question. If we've got 18 open right now, and we're gonna add 52 more that are open, I don't wanna tie up a whole lot of the CARES dollars and then not fill those positions and have to give that money back to the federal government. So I don't know how your accounting works to make this happen so that we don't turn all this back because we got a whole bunch of open positions that we couldn't fill.
Well, I think that's a great question. It's something that's definitely on our mind, and it'll come up as we talk about how much we've actually spent of our total bucket and where we are in timing. So at the beginning of December, we will know by then, based on the contracts we have with all of our cities, schools, public health and social service contacts, our workforce development partners, our business grants, all of those, we will know how much money is remaining. We also have told the review team that's overseeing the 18 million for public health and social service, as you'll hear from Hope today, if you take the recommended action today, that will only leave 700,000 remaining. We still haven't heard from Wesley, and we still know there are some community federally qualified medical centers that haven't necessarily submitted funding. We have told them not to be constrained specifically to that 18 million dollars. If there's a greater need, we'll come back and present that to you as an option. So in December, we will come back to you with a recommended revised spending plan. Some of that may be, as I reported to you in personnel, just through six months, we had spent $51 million on those positions that were qualified to be refunded with CARES money. And so we only allocated $10 million for that at the time. And so there is certainly going to be personnel reimbursement available if necessary. And what that does is it provides potentially some funding to either Concare or the General Fund so that we can sustain services into 2021, knowing that, from those sources, knowing that COVID's not gonna disappear December 31st. So we'll have some strategies we'll look at.
So Cliff Notes of your answer, or that you're gonna reallocate this if we don't fill these positions?
Yes.
And we're not gonna give the money back?
Correct.
That's the answer. Thank you.
Apologies. I'll do better.
Thank you for the Cliff Notes summary. Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I'm ready to make a motion to approve the 52 new positions.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Lindsey.
Still me.
Okay. I can't read mine on the notes here.
No, I apologize. This one will be a receive and file and I'll try and talk faster, Commissioner Dennis. So in total, our COVID spending for the county through this morning is $43,517,881. Now of that, 40, or I'm sorry, 36.6 million has occurred within cares. We have 1.4 million within the county's general fund, $27,671 in the fire general fund, and $58,000 in the coronavirus emergency supplemental grant. So none of those numbers changed much. All of that, it was toward county support. Now, within that cares spending bucket of 36.6 million, that is an increase of roughly $600,000 from last week when we talked. Of that, $86,000 is just for personnel, our temporary staffing. We all are blessed to be paid tomorrow, and so this reflects that payment for tomorrow, actually. The highest single pay period of Family First Coronavirus Relief Act aid yet. That is actually up to 71,000. That is much higher than what we've seen the last few pay periods, and certainly that's expected with the COVID spike in our community. Another $63,000 for security services at the drive-through testing site. And then we've implemented some of the things you've already approved, like the additional furniture for the health department and the bipolar ionization at the arena. Now for schools and cities, we're up to $10,42,785. That's no change for schools, a slight increase for cities. And in some exciting news, I think I shared with you last week, the portal is open so that they can begin to submit their monthly reimbursement requests. And so those will begin coming to you so that cities can start to get access to that round two of funding that you all approved. So that will come to you for award. Moving to spark spending, we are up to 536 safe operating grants that have gone out the door for a total of 2.6 million. So that's a $730,000 increase from where we were last week, which reflects those grants going out the door. And I just want to pass along to you all, our folks, our staff have received a number of really excited emails saying how much this grant program means to them. And so I want you to know, they have said to pass that along to the decision makers and obviously that's you all. So definitely it makes our team feel good to hear that. So then let's shift a bit to elections. So for HAVA cares, again, the Secretary of State allocated $420,000 for that. Of that, $270,000 has already been spent. We are in process of spending $68,000 and pending submission is about $81,700 to the Secretary of State for cabinets to store and transport poll print equipment, the cleaning of early voting sites and general election day locations, and postage expenditures above what was included in the 2020 budget. So when that's all done and submitted to the Secretary of State, we anticipate being reimbursed the full amount of $420,306.37. So then, even though it's not cares, it is related to COVID, we got the Center for Tech and Civic Life funding of $816,000. And I can go through what those expenses are pretty quickly. About $12,000 for drop boxes, for polling location sites and secure ballot bags for pickup, about $3,600 for security cameras for those drop boxes, about $3,200 for P P E, about $1,600 for advanced mail and provisional envelopes, and another $2,000 for operating supplies. In addition, pending cards and invoice, there was a voter outreach campaign for the InTrust Bank Arena mega site for billboards, radio, and geofence ads, and that was right at $16,000. There was a bit, about $300 spent on Spanish translation services for election materials. The installation of drop boxes, the cost is unknown but still waiting on invoices, but they expect that that will be fully reimbursable by this. Their original estimate for the additional $2 paid per hour to poll workers is estimated at $83,000, but they'll be running those reports now that payroll has posted to get a precise figure. And then the ADECO temps, who have been finishing out the general election work assisting with all of the poll worker, the vote counting and all of that, will also come from this. And so the notable new charge is personnel, and that is for the poll workers for InTrust. And so we talked about that last week. That also, of course, included the cost for the machines and the bar scanners that we have also already talked about. So they do, are very well aware of the request to come and give a complete update. My understanding is that that will occur in early December, once they have gotten through all of their canvassing and reporting. They'll come to the commission and actually give you the details, top to bottom, on everything that happened with election and the spending. So with that, that is my report on spending, and I would recommend the commission receive and file unless you have questions I can answer or follow up with and get you an answer.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay. Tom, you had a comment?
Just real quickly, Commissioner Sheena just sent me a text and she had contacted the health department after our discussion, and she is advising that the health department has added another temp agency called Chris Country to bring in medical staff. And Chris Stewart is advising she feels they are going to be able to accommodate a lot of this need that we're asking for. So I just wanted to throw that in to finish that conversation on staffing.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Sheena, if you're listening. Okay, we have a report that we received from Lindsay. I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to receive and file. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next up, hello, Hope.
Hello.
Before you start, can I just comment that I've watched a couple of the cares staff meetings and you add a tremendous value to those meetings.
Thank you very much.
And it's not unnoticed. I mean, the whole, the whole committee does great, but I do duly note that you contribute a lot of, a lot of good stuff, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Hope Hernandez, your accounting director. I'm here to fill in for Brent to present the recommendations from the stimulus review team that we serve on together. So for the Cares Act external funding program status and program approvals, this will require a B O C C vote to approve the grant awards. As you all well are aware, the Public Health and Social Services has a total allocation of 18 million. The financial stimulus review team, we met at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, and the team recommends an approval of $2,869,019 to Ascension, and then $650,000 to Rock Regional Hospital. That total recommendation for today is $3,519,019. That would bring the total awards that the team has brought to you for approval to $17,293,953.73, and would leave remaining unallocated funds of $706,46.27. So today I am requesting B O C C approval of the award recommendations totaling $3,519,019.
Okay, Hope, thank you. And that's for Ascension and Rock.
Yes.
Regional. Okay, Commissioner Cruz has a question?
Thank you, Chairman. I sent a follow-up email to a couple of folks about whether this was a reimbursement, and I've received a ton of emails. So if you emailed me back, I'm sorry that I didn't see it. So if we could chat about that really fast. So the money that is going out and that you're requesting that we approve today, is this going to be a reimbursement model or is this outright give them the money?
Yeah, I know Brent had replied to you, I think maybe it was yesterday, so it's probably in one of your emails. But yes, it's going to be a direct reimbursement is what Rock Regional is asking for. So basically, they didn't get any hospital funding in the beginning because the way that it was based on was 2018 Medicaid and Medicare billings. That's how they were funded out to the different hospitals. And Rock Regional wasn't formed until 2019. And so based on their estimate, if they had been in business, they would have gotten about $2 million. So they didn't get any money at all from the federal government, so they're now requesting $650,000 from us, and it'll be direct reimbursement only.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So I don't see any other questions. I'll make a motion to approve the request for $3,519,019.
$19.
$19.
Second.
It is a motion and a second to approve. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Hope.
Yep, I have a couple more items for you, just some updates. On the safe operating grants, again, that's 7.5 million, which was allocated. Checks continue going out on our check runs that we have every Tuesday and Thursday of each week. As of end of business today, $1,924,922.77 to 389 applicants has went out the door. And 70 new applications have been received since the reopening, so that's $350,000. And for our P P E kit distribution, it's mostly done. There are a few remaining, but Brent will give you guys a full report next week. And then in the workforce development program, it's still in progress. And again, there was $1.9 million allocated to that program. And with that, that's all the updates I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So you've awarded checks to 389 applicants?
Yes, for the business program.
Right, right, the safe operating grants. And so you've received 70 new ones, but what's the total number of people who have applied? Like 1,400?
Uh, not quite there, but close. Yeah, she said close to 1,400. Sorry.
Okay. I think you know where I'm getting at this, Lindsay.
Yes, ma'am. So I will tell you, last week, we got a note from the state saying that there were a number, and I think Brent talked about this, there were a number of businesses that had applied for state funding for varying degrees, and that funding wasn't awarded because they, their bucket ran out quickly, which is totally understandable. So they sent that list of applicants to us, and so we have actually reached out to all of those businesses and have encouraged them to apply for our program. And so if that occurs, we expect to get pretty darn close to where we are maxing out the funding. And if we don't max out the funding, then we will come back to you as a part of that revised spending plan in December to propose an alternative option.
Okay, so today's November the 12th. What's the final day in which we're going to be able to allocate these funds if we've received 1,400 applications and we're only, we've only gotten roughly around 400 out so far? So is there a timeline that people need to be aware of? And please share that with us now.
Yes, ma'am. So we have told folks that we will continue to process those grants until November 30th or when the money runs out, whichever happens first.
Okay. So community members have until November 30th if they have not already applied and received and planned to do so. So that's only a couple of weeks.
It is. And I will tell you, we have a lot still to process. We reached out to D R S, who's one of our consultants, and they have stepped into the game of reviewing. So they've added five, which has doubled the size of our staff who's able to actually review these applications. That September 2nd guidance that came out changed the way this program works. It requires us to have documented expenses to be able to reimburse, as opposed to just making some assumptions that because there was a shutdown here, they were impacted. And so that has slowed down the process, but we have tried to react by making process improvements and then bringing in that additional staff. So we expect this money to go out the door much faster now.
Okay, and while you're up here, I know that Senator Moran had introduced or tried to introduce something about the money being pushed out. Have we had any word on that?
So the Riser Act is what was put forward. They actually introduced that back in early October. We have not heard anything. I think Tanya, and I'm going to throw her under the bus here, I think Tanya was on a call where she heard that potentially early December is the soonest we would hear whether there's any activity on that, just because Congress needs to come back into session. And so what, what we can't do is wait to see if that happens. And so we're continuing to try and proceed as though that's not a guarantee and trying to get that money spent out into the community.
Okay, so one final reiteration, November 30th is the last day for community members to apply for safe operating grants, those $5,000 grants that 1,400 other folks in our community have applied for thus far. So don't wait, get on it, community. I guess that's what I'm trying to make sure that we, make sure we, can we put that on our socials too? I mean, reiterate that? Would that be possible?
Sorry, Lindsay. Akim Ashford. Commissioner Cruz, so whenever that extension happened, we already created a graphic that we had before, we changed that date, and we continually pushed out that message. We've already done so, but we can continue to share that, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is a receive and file from Hope. Thank you for the report on the, on the various status of the grants. So I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next item is Tom.
I think while we're, while we're under cares, we can talk about the W S U testing, and there's two components to the testing that we're going to discuss with you today. Lindsay's up to talk about the reimbursement for equipment that you all approved several weeks ago, months ago now, and where that is at and what, the challenge is there. And then Tim is still on the phone yet, and he will talk about testing. So we'll let Lindsay go first and then we'll answer questions and then we'll have Tim go after that.
Okay, Lindsay.
Okay. For the record, again, Lindsay Porusso. So Commissioners, we started talking with W S U back in June. Since then, we have gone back and forth. You've seen many presentations. The plan has evolved as COVID has evolved. So what I'd like to do, though, is just pick up kind of where we are today. So we had sent a request for information, actually, our consultants had sent that request for information back in September, basically saying, under the Treasury rules and the uniform guidance, here is what is required. And one thing that B K D has reiterated to us that I think is important is that at this point, we're not imposing anything beyond the bare minimum, what we're required to do under uniform guidance for sub-recipient monitoring and internal controls. And so at the time the R F I was sent, we requested about 12 pieces of information. My understanding is you all have been provided the timeline for what we've submitted, and then also I think you're seeing the result of this R F I. So our consultants were able to basically go through and identify what exactly it is that's still outstanding that we need. And so this document says reconciliation of R F I documentation submitted as of November 6th, 2020. And you can see there are three items on the list where there's a yes, meaning that we have sufficient documentation to move forward specifically with what we need. But there are still a number of items where there's insufficient documentation. The one that has been a bit of a holdup that I think we're, we're getting there on has been what's labeled number two, total project budget with sources and uses. So essentially, just like when we submit a budget to you, we tell you, here's the scope of what we want to do, here's how much money is going to come in to support it, and here's how we plan to spend it. That's a document that, as I understand, is a fairly typical type of document that you would use with any type of grant award. Granted, this has been a very fluid process with COVID, again, as expectations have changed. So, but what we need to know is basically where's the money coming from, even though we, we don't think that there's a nefarious intent by any means to try and cross funding sources. We know that the state has provided some funding. We know that there could be some charges for service. And so what we need to be able to clearly delineate in our documentation, because we do face a five-year audit period, you know, I may not still be in this seat five years from now when the audit begins, and sometimes these audits can actually go on for years, is my understanding. We need to have that documentation of what precisely it is that's happening, what we're funding, and then how the other parts are being funded. And so that has been something that we've had multiple conversations on actually already this week. And like I said, as of late yesterday, early this morning, I think we're making progress toward that goal. There are still some other areas where there was some information that we didn't have that we needed, proof of payment or an invoice to match a payment and those types of things. And so that information has been communicated back to W S U, and there have been ongoing discussions about how to get that additional information. Our consultants fully understand, and we fully understand, your desire to get this money out the door, and so we are working very hard to make that happen. And so again, though, we will bring back any expenditure reimbursement request to you for approval. But as you can see from this list, there's a lot of information that we need in order to do this right, and that's what we're working toward. So Tom, did I cover everything you need me to cover?
Any questions, Commissioner?
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So if I hear what you're saying correctly, if it boils all down to it, if they don't give us this info that we're requesting, they're not going to get the money.
That's correct. We need this in order, again, what, what we are trying to do is meet the bare minimum requirements. Much of this is driven actually by the uniform guidance, which the Treasury guidance incorporates. And so that's where we're coming back to our consultants to say, okay, what do we need then? We work with federal grants, but we certainly don't work with federal, federal grants on this scale. And so we're relying on their expertise to guide us on this. And so we're relying on their expertise to guide us on this.
Not qualify that, Commissioner. They won't get the money unless this commission says for us to give them the money. We couldn't give them the money and hit Treasury guidelines. Does that make sense?
Say that again? We could give them money and hit Treasury guidelines.
That's what we're trying to achieve. But if this commission authorizes us to write them a check, we will write them a check. And I think we've said that from the beginning. I just wanted...
Right, but you've also said from the beginning that it goes against our auditors if they don't give us the documentation that's needed. And I do believe, I mean, is that what you've said, Lindsay?
Yes.
That's what you've said the entire time. And I think that was the issue that I had. And I said, when I approved the money, when I voted to approve it, I said, I have to go by our professional staff here that says what our auditors are saying. I mean, what's the holdup with the documentation? I don't get it.
I think it's just trying to clearly define what it is that we need.
Is it our, I mean, I speak for the county. Is it the counties we need to clearly define it? Or are they not understanding? Like, how can we come to a resolution so that we can...
I think the issue is there's just so much that they've done. There's so much paperwork that's required because they've done so much. It's just trying to make sure that all of the pieces are together in one spot. And so I think it's just an ongoing effort. And I mean, and I know it seems like it's been a long time, but the first time I think we got a picture of the 4 million was actually September 11th. And so it's actually only been two months since we've tried to reconcile against those specific dollar figures. So when you look at it from that lens, it's actually not been that long. And again, there's just a huge volume of information that's being traded.
So have they provided a receipt of the equipment that they purchased?
So we have, we have a number of things that we have to check. I think we've talked about procurement policies. And so we're making sure that we have orders that are consistent with WSU's procurement policy. We have to have documentation of that. We have to have documentation that the invoice matches what was ordered, and then that the proof of payment occurred. So it's not as simple as just requesting the receipt from them. I think we have a lot of that. It's all of those other pieces of information that we need for literally every expense that we're also working through to make sure that we get.
I think that team is working as hard as they are diligently working on this. And so is our staff and our auditors, and we're all on the same team trying to get this done.
Hold on, hang on. Can we, Commissioner Dennis?
That's the noise. Yeah, okay, sorry. That's all right, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to vouch that I think this team is working, the Wichita State team is working as hard as they can. We all have to understand or take a step back. It's, they're standing up a lab, have stood up a lab, tons of moving pieces. I think they're giving it every effort, and I think we're getting closer. But I just want to make sure that it's November, the money's not out the door yet. I just want to make sure the commission has a good, clear understanding of what is happening.
Well, I don't doubt that people are working hard to get it done. I don't doubt that at all. But the conversation that I had yesterday with Dr. Tomlin was, they're up and going. They are, they've tested athletes, they've tested students. I mean, they're going. It's already up and going. So I just wonder, to get this financial, get this out of the way, you know, what, is there, I mean, can you provide a spreadsheet that says, okay, document one is what we need? I mean, I guess it just doesn't seem... Maybe there's something that I'm missing, I guess. Because it seems to me like you guys have tried to get this information. I see in the email that you sent to all of us at 12:04, a timeline of how many times that you have communicated. And I just wonder what the holdup is.
I mean, I think they've done a good job. They've provided a smart sheet to us, which is basically a living, breathing Excel document that everyone can get into. They're routinely adding information. I think it's a matter of making sure we all know what the expectation is, and making sure it's coming in, and then giving people time to validate the information. Because this is, I mean, this isn't an easy process to go through and check every single expense. We have provided a spreadsheet that has said, here's what we're still needing. And like I said, I think we're making progress. We've had conversations each day this week, and so I think we're getting there. I am not pessimistic yet. I know they are anxious to get their funds. We're anxious to spend the money. We just want to make sure we're doing it the right way. And I think we're making good progress toward that end. I do. I don't know if you're hearing something else.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just... I guess I agree with Commissioner Cruz. It seems a little bit frustrating, because I think we had a governor down. We celebrated ribbon cutting almost five weeks ago. It's been more than four weeks. And I know that they are a live lab. They're actually conducting testing right now, and their capabilities are huge. And so I don't know what the problem is, or where the problem is. But I understand there's a lot of things that have to be done correctly for this to work out financially, and I understand that. Do we have someone within our organization that's assigned to this to walk it to success? Do we have someone who, this is all they're doing. We're actually communicating daily, hourly, minute by minute, maybe goes there and gets information, helps them fill it out. I mean, are we invested in trying to solve this to know that we... This testing is right around the corner. But there seems, you've identified 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10 items that are not complete. And it looks to me like this is a long ways off still, based on the sheet you handed out. I think we should be able to, ideally, we would solve this today, whatever it takes. Because that testing is right there in our own community. Thousands and thousands of tests per day they can run. And I don't, I guess, it's disappointing to see all these barriers to success. But the other, so I guess, let me ask a question first, and I'll stop, and I have other comments. But do we have someone here in our organization that's, this is all they're focused on, getting this turned on? We're trying to get to success. Do we have someone assigned to this to make sure we get this done as soon as possible?
Lindsay go, but I will tell you, we are very invested in this. If we calculated staff time on just this project, on just the Wichita State project, it's hundreds of hours. And I know WSU is heavily invested as well. We spend a lot of time trying to do this the right way. But Lindsay oversees it, and we've got two levels of consultants that have people on this that are trying to work through this. But at the end of the day, it comes down to us receiving the information that we're asking for. And I know Wichita State's working hard to get that done.
If I was going to characterize our investment and their investment, they're well over $10 million invested in this at this point, and they've received virtually nothing from the county financially up to this point. They have three people assigned to doing paperwork, if I understand correctly, trying to solve whatever the paperwork issues are. I don't know what else they can do. But they're doing everything they know to do, and I think they're still struggling with, things aren't done, I guess, good enough, or whatever the problem is. I understand there's also an IT issue, something between the county and WSU that may be a barrier as well.
You just flipped gears on us there. That's on the testing side. Tim will talk about that. On this portion, though, I agree with you, Commissioner. I agree with all of you. This seems like it ought to be something that ought to be done already. We're working toward it. I'm with Lindsay. I'm not pessimistic. I'm sure this is going to get done. But at the end of the day, we have to submit, you know, to cares in an appropriate fashion that is being required of us by Treasury.
As I said earlier, the most important thing we have, the most important thing we have, any of us have right now, is to getting this rapid testing and large numbers of testing turned on. And they have the keys. They're the ones that can do this. We've got $100 million, you know, put into our checkbook to make this happen. This is the most important thing we have. And I know that, you know, you talked about this started in June. Here we are, five months later, still haven't solved it. They've invested over $10 million, I think $15 million roughly, and they've gotten virtually nothing from the county. I don't, I'm just frustrated, because I know everyone's trying. But I guess whatever we can do to partner with them and make that phone call every single hour, if we have to, and maybe assign staff to go out there and help them walk them through the process. I would love to see this solved today or tomorrow, if possible. It sounds like it's questions and answers. It's paperwork, it sounds like. It's not technology. It's not, it's not equipment. It's not test kits. It is paperwork, it sounds like. So I don't know what it's going to take, but we've got to solve this as soon as possible. I'll do it. I mean, tell me how I can, if there's anything I can do to help, tell me how I can help. Thank you.
Lindsay, let me ask you a question on this. I think we're all frustrated. Jim, I'm agreeing with you on that. When is our next cares meeting scheduled? Do we know? I don't even remember. Okay, tentatively?
For cares discussions, or?
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday? Part of me just says, I know we could take a courageous, I don't even think it's a risky event, and just make a motion to approve, to write a check for 4 million, and know that they're going to end up truing it up. But I'm hesitant, based on all the stuff we're hearing. But I'm kind of saying, you know, we send a message to WSU, and our own commission gets joust over this. And I'm saying, if we don't have all the paperwork by Wednesday, next meeting, that we consider a motion just to approve a check for $4 million. And then we'll, like I said, Commissioner Howell, it's just paperwork that's got to be... And I think they'd be, they would know the pressure to show up. But I'm just throwing that out there a little bit. Commissioner Cruz, what's that? Or Commissioner Howell, yeah? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just want to say, I appreciate your comments, and I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Cruz?
So I'm not necessarily comfortable with that. And I've said that from the very beginning, because I understand the need for testing. They're doing testing already. But I think that we, the county, have done a really diligent job of trying to get this paperwork. And if we can be audited up to five years... I mean, what if they don't give us this paperwork? And then we are sitting over here and not able to answer questions from auditors? I don't believe that that's the best course of action for... I think that puts our county and our taxpayers at risk. And so I'm not willing to do that. I've said that from the beginning, and I will stick by that.
Okay. Well, it's a lot to contemplate. I think we can all make our own further research and contacts. And so at this point, thank you for the information. Unless there's more comments.
Timmy, you want to talk about?
I think Wednesday's, Wednesday's an important day for me personally. So anyway. Commissioner Howell?
I'll just say, Mr. Chairman, I think your comments were right on. I would have a hard time understanding how, at the end of the day, we're going to have to use property taxes to pay back $4 million because we provided testing to our community, which is suffering daily with coronavirus. The faster we can get some testing out there, we can start seeing some solutions that actually make some sense in this community. This $4 million is probably the best $4 million we could ever spend. And how much is our property tax funds for 2021 going to be next year, roughly?
The mill levy rate or the mill levy itself?
Well, how many property tax dollars will we take into our...
Sedgwick County loans, roughly $140 million.
$140 million. Again, I don't want a tax increase, trust me. I don't want to... But I would find $4 million in there if I had to pay this back over the next five years. This is so important. Nothing else trumps this. I would do, I'm willing to take a little bit of risk to lean forward and get this going as soon as possible, even if I have to find the money someplace else in the budget. This has got to be done. And I think that we've got to understand, a delay of another week or two is not okay. We've got to get this turned on. And I'll find the money one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't agree more with what Commissioner Howell's saying. WSU has the capability. I know that they're bringing hundreds of tests to the county courthouse this week. I think Commissioner, Chairman Meitzner actually negotiated that as well yesterday, correct?
Well, they're going to bring some, yeah.
Yes, yes. So they have the capability. We know we need more testing. It's roughly $34. We're paying, what is it, Lindsay, to CRL, roughly 90 to 100? So it's almost a third of the cost. It'll pay for itself. We need to get it done, and we need to get it done sooner than later. So I mean, I'd be willing to move today. I agree with Commissioner Howell. Why are we putting this off a week when we're ready to go? Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My biggest worry is that what the comments have just been made are now putting it on our staff to take some action that our staff is not comfortable with, and it is not putting any pressure on WSU to comply with the needs of the county. So I truly believe that we need this testing moving. But I want to make sure that our comments don't send the wrong signal to WSU that, well, we don't have to worry about it anymore, because the Board of County Commissioners is going to send the money no matter what we do. So I want to make sure that we're very careful in our statements that we make, that we don't send the wrong signals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. So with no other comments, we can move on to the testing.
Okay. Timmy, you want to go ahead and go?
Sure. So Commissioners, last week, the Health Department took 1,967 samples at the drive-through sample site at Mobile Outreach Events and through the disease containment unit. Over 1,700 of those were through the drive-through sample site. We've extended our hours in combination with sampling asymptomatic individuals. We sampled about 1,000 more folks than we had been per week. We've seen the demand for testing ebb and flow. Right now, it's peaking again. Today, we've got over 600 people scheduled for sampling. So the demand is back, and there needs to be, as I've said for months, there needs to be a multi-pronged approach to this sampling. We hold the key to some of it with our drive-through sampling site. WSU is ready to work with other entities to select, to acquire samples in a different method, and they'll be able to test those locally. All of those things are important. Health Department continues to focus their testing efforts on disease containment. That's what public health does. They're offering a high-volume sampling experience for folks that are having symptoms in close contact of people with symptoms, and then especially asymptomatic populations. And now we're also offering it to anyone who's not experiencing symptoms as well. Even with the WSU MDL, the multiple and multiple saliva sample collecting sites across the community, whether they're employer-based or school-based, the Health Department will continue to need to operate a sampling site. The two don't compete with each other, but they complement each other. There are people that need to get an NP sample rather than a saliva sample because of the type of work that they do, the populations that they work with. We'll continue to be able to do that for folks. And we've improved processes to the point now where we're able to run 600 people through in a day. Right now, the Health Department uses four different labs. We use Cahill, which is the KDAG lab, for those that are experiencing symptoms, meet those criteria. We use the Signoff Chips lab in the Kansas City area, the CytoCheck lab in southeast Kansas, and CRL in Lenexa. As we continue to collect samples, we will continue to use the labs that have the capacity to test our samples, with the intent to move all of that testing to WSU when they're ready for it. As early as October 2nd of this year, Health Department staff started meeting with WSU staff to work through the processes that would allow them to test our samples, including hosting WSU folks to come observe our drive-through site and see how it is that we collect samples, so that we could figure out how to get processes to line up. We've been requesting information, access, and supplies since that time. Again, this week, we've had multiple meetings with staff from WSU MDL to finalize some of those processes that will allow us to shift the bulk of our sampling to the test facility that they have here in town. There are two final pieces that we have to solve. One is a data transfer method, so that we can electronically transfer information to them, so that the backend gets done appropriately. And then we've also got to get supplies for sampling. They either have to approve the supplies that we already have, or they have to provide us with sampling supplies that are accepted. So we've been asking for that for a number of weeks. Based on a phone call with Andy Schlapp earlier today, we expect that interface now to be available to test sometime next week. There's a key lab employee at WSU that's been unavailable due to some health issues. That's been a barrier to getting the supply issue solved. But Andy's taken that on, and he's working on a solution for that right now. Andy's taken that on, and he's working on a solution for that right now. Because of the population that we serve, the symptomatic folks, most are sampled only once. And that's different from what an employer-based or a school-based sampling process would be, where the same fixed population goes through again and again. The labs that we use right now allow us to provide paper documentation along with each being tested, and then they do the data entry. We schedule between 450 and 650 unique individuals each day, and so we've got to minimize the time each person spends at the drive-through site. And that means that we've got to have an electronic data transfers method with MDL, because they don't have the resources to do data entry like the other labs that we do business with. So we've got to be able to get information to them electronically, and they've got to be able to accept it. Health Department also works with a number of long-term care facilities, need to sample staff and residents, do that as part of our disease containment strategy. We're also going to shift that testing to the MDL as soon as they're ready for it. Testing that the MDL is performing is similar, it's PCR testing, just like what we do with the NP swabs right now. They are going to test our NP swabs in addition to saliva samples. Neither one of these is what some people call rapid or antigen testing, but because they're here in town, because of the volume that they'll be able to handle, and the reduced transportation time, we should be able to get results back within 24 to 36 hours generally. They are in the process of working with businesses and schools that will allow them to, that are going to do frequent sampling of fixed populations, the same people multiple times. WSU is working with the state of Kansas right now on that, on the payment process for that type of testing. But we are close, but there are a couple of different things, a couple of different details that we have to get worked out. And based on that conversation that I had with Andy earlier today, there's another meeting this afternoon to continue to work out these details. We're close, but we have to get a couple of details ironed out before we'll be able to take advantage of their lab.
Okay, Tim. Thanks for the update. Probably going to have a couple of questions here, starting with Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So I guess I just want to kind of go back to the lab itself for a second. If they, if we don't give them this money, will they shut down? If the county does not award them $4 million, will this lab shut down?
Timmy, you're going to get that, or you want me to try?
I'll let you try. I don't know the answer.
I, you know, I don't know, Commissioner. The lab is up and running. It's fully designed. They've got, they're setting up agreements. Last night, I talked with Andy, which has probably been a week or a week and a half ago. They have agreements going with businesses within the community to, to test. And that's the thing with the way the lab is set up. If you have a, and Tim mentioned this, I'll just reiterate it. If you have a confined group of people, say a business or a school, that they can batch test, that it works very well, where the challenge is making it work for our drive-through. And I think we'll get there. As Tim has mentioned, we can maybe get this up and running, at least sample it next week. But, so I don't think that they would shut the lab down. They've got a viable lab up and running. They're already providing tests. They're going to do a tremendous good for the community and businesses and schools, so. But I don't, you'd have to ask.
I don't doubt that. I mean, I, go ahead, Tim.
Can I say one thing, Tom?
Sure.
I mean, I think that Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned the price that they're charging for these tests. The $4 million that is case for the equipment is built into the pricing. I think that if that $4 million didn't get to them, there's a possibility that the $35 test would become a $40 or $45 test instead for everybody.
Okay. Okay, that's it. I lost my question. Thank you.
Okay, so back to the testing. Any other questions? And Commissioner Howell, I know you've done a nice job investigating the testing options. And so it looks like, to me, there's going to, there's a county, there needs to be a county agreement for testing. And meanwhile, they're working with a lot of other entities already and running testing. They're running about 1,000 tests a day, I think, right now, from somewhere, not from us, though. So.
I guess I have one question for Tim. He said something about they have to electronically transfer the data. Is it to WSU or from WSU?
To.
Have to transfer to. If I understand correctly, the other users in the community that are doing this, again, I did a CRL test, saliva test, through Lenexa when I tested positive. And for, again, I didn't have any training at that point. I just followed the instructions. I had to register the kit. I had to fill out my name and my, and answer some questions about my symptoms, and give them some information about my birthday and where I live and that type of thing. But it was basically a user interface. I was able to fill out the information without any prior knowledge about what I needed to do. And I've talked to Dr. Tomlin a little bit. The process at WSU, I think, is a little bit similar. In fact, I'm planning on taking the training today at 3:00 to see what this is all about. But if I understand correctly, you have to register the kit. You have to get some information about the person that provides the sample, answer some questions. It really is almost to the point where the person that's providing the sample, if they have a smartphone, can probably fill out most of the information themselves. I guess I'm, I don't understand why it is that we've, we're doing this, I guess, on paper, and then we have to type it all in on their behalf. I don't know why we can't streamline this in some way, but expect the user to fill out most of the information, making sure that they register their kit correctly. I don't know why, I guess I'm a little bit unclear as to why it is we have to collect information the way we are currently doing it and transferring the information to WSU. Why are we not doing this, allowing the user to, the tester, person to do a lot of this on their own?
It has to do with, that's make sure the work that we're doing at the drive-through sampling site. So when we're running 700 people through, it takes anywhere, I also took a CPR test, and I filled out the, I registered my kit at the drive-through, and it took about seven or eight minutes, maybe. So I'm sure some people could do it faster. Some people are going to do it slower. But if that seven or eight minutes gets multiplied by 400 folks going through, that's, that will close down the drive-through process. I think people self-registering, if WSU has a way to get the kits in the hands of people and says to them, here's the website that you need to go to to self-register, that's great. And I think that will be a great supplement we're doing at the drive-through sampling site. But at the drive-through sampling site, we get out, we collect that information upfront. We enter it into a spreadsheet, and then we print out documents that we send to the other labs. What we want to do is, rather than print out documents, we want to be able to transfer that information electronically to WSU, so that it doesn't have to get entered again on the backend.
Okay, so I, just to follow up, I haven't done the training yet, and I plan on doing that today at 3:00 if I get out of this meeting in time. But if I understand correctly, this is designed for the person that provides a sample to do most of the data entry themselves. I don't know that we should hand them a kit unless they're going to go through the process of actually, you know, going through that portal and providing the information. But they're, I think they're testing like 30 companies today, or, I'm sorry, training like 30 companies today. Places like Spirit Aerosystems, for example. And they'll give them a set of these test kits, and as long as they are working with someone who needs to be tested, they can make sure they fill out the portal at the appropriate time. They can provide the kit, and then they can collect the specimen in a bag, and then they can have it delivered to MDL. That's the process. I don't know, if Spirit Aerosystems can do this, or a school can do this, why we can't follow the same process through our, through any organization, including Sedgwick County? Go ahead.
Well, that system is going to work absolutely, as you described it, for those individual, for those companies that want to do that, train staff. If an individual needs to be sampled, and they don't work at Spirit or one of those other organizations, but they need to get tested and their doctor's office doesn't test them, that's where the Health Department fits in. And so we will continue to sample folks that may not work for Spirit or be a student at a school, in one of the schools. We're all going to be providing samples, collecting samples, and getting them to the WSU MDL lab for them to process. Ours are going to be processed through the drive-through center. Many of the others that go through the WSU MDL will be employer-based collections, things like that.
I guess my final comment is, it sounds like this is much simpler than what, I've heard it described through the drive-through, it's taken a 15-minute process. It doesn't sound like it's that complicated, really. The MDL process should take about two minutes. And the user can do most of the data entry themselves. It doesn't have to be done by a hospital worker or a nursing staff or anything. It could be done through someone who simply has a very small amount of training, that can interface with that person, make sure that the data's been entered correctly. And then they can register the kit, collect the specimen, and get it delivered to MDL. It's not a very complicated process. And that's the way they're going to be able to collect, that's the way they can collect, you know, 25,000, run through 25,000 samples a week, or whatever the number is that they're going to be able to do. It's a huge number of samples, which will, I think, change the, change our situation here in Sedgwick County. I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Absolutely. And the Health Department doesn't need to get involved in those interactions at all. Those are interactions that can take place between an employer, for example, and the MDL. There's no reason for the Health Department to get in the middle of that. We'll continue to serve the population that we serve, and then employers will be able to work with the MDL to get their workforce, their student population, whatever it may be, sampled as well. So I agree with you 100%. Those sorts of things can work in parallel and serve two different needs. But again, get more people tested.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay.
All right. Tim, thanks a lot for the information. Anybody else have any questions related to this? I don't, I don't see any right now. Tom, you have any closing statements?
I don't.
Okay. Well, Commissioner, thanks again for your continued attention. And it is Thursday. We're not scheduled for another meeting until, do we have a staff maybe Tuesday?
Yes, sir, we have staff on Tuesday.
One more thing, though. Commissioner Howell has a question.
No, this is more of a comment. Just wanted to highlight the fact that NBC was here with Lester Holt on Veterans Day yesterday.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Dennis and myself did attend a Veterans Day ceremony. It was quite wonderful. And Lester Holt, NBC crew, was here to capture some of the things about Wichita and Sedgwick County. Very, very, very proud of our veterans and the support that they get through our community. And I wanted just to highlight the fact that at tonight, 5:30, if you haven't already heard this, at 5:30 on the, on the, I believe, the NBC nightly broadcast, they're going to highlight Wichita. So I wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Just piggyback, we don't have the other section on our special meetings. But besides that event, I did attend two other events for our veterans. Now, I do want to make sure that we thank all the veterans for their service to our nation. But normally, we have a large parade downtown, probably would have happened this Saturday, but because of the pandemic, there is not a Veterans Day parade. And normally, why, JROTC puts on a huge parade over at Century 2, and that's been canceled also. So as a result, and we want to thank very much the Friends of Doc for allowing JROTC, Congressman Estes, and Cheryl Logan from USD 259 to thank all of our veterans over at Doc's Hangar, and we did that on Tuesday. And then yesterday morning, Doc came out and flew over a brand-new flag that's put up at 2:35 on Central in my district. So we've had a number of events to recognize the sacrifices of the men and women that have served our country and are still serving. But since we don't have another, I just wanted to pass on my thanks to each and every veteran that's ever served our country and is serving now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks for summarizing that and reporting in. So, okay, I don't see any other comments, so we will stand adjourned, and thank you again.